It's morning today, so I just want to congratulate her on that also. And also for the public, there's also one more empty spot in case anybody wants to deal with behavioral health. It's due to the background and all that, and there's confidential information, so that's why they need to do a background check on every person. So if anybody wants to, you can talk to Linda or you can ask me about, you know, what the position. It's just an advisory position. There's, can't remember the amount of people on the board, either 11 or 15 or under, but just give me a call and then I'll be glad to talk to you about it. Also too, there's also one, I'm looking for another person to appoint to the Merced Cemetery Board if somebody wants to learn more about being on the board for the Merced Cemetery for District One. So also too, there's a empty spot there. Also, another one on the area agency on aging for senior citizens, there's one for that. And maybe I might have one too pretty soon on first five Merced County, four dealing with newborns up to five years old. So there's also a lot of information about that. Also wanted to say that I attended a Merced, I mean, I'm sorry, a Turlock West and a Turlock East groundwater sustainability agency dealing with water on the basin for the Turlock West Side and the East Side. So as everyone knows, we're in a drought and this is just dealing with groundwater. And also the West Side part of the half, a lot of farmers are pumping a lot and they don't have surface water on the East Side. And so the future, there's going to be problems because obviously if there's no surface water, not enough surface water, and then there's groundwater on this side and underwater, the water percolates to the East Side, you know, there's issues of people having, where people have the land, so there's going to be like a little war on, and lawsuits regarding, I assume my perception regarding water and, because on the East Side, as you know, there's farmers with thousands of acres and they just don't worry about water, they just pump and pump. And so, you know, we're trying to be conservative and, you know, rich farmers just want to use a lot of water. So I just wanted to say that. And the Merced GSA, which is south of Merced River, which runs right here, north of Livingston, from the East to the West, south of Merced River, you know, is the water table is 100 feet or lower. On that side of the river, it's about 50, 60 feet. So there's plenty of water on that side and not enough water on this side. So I know that a lot of our users, our biggest industrial user uses millions of gallons of water a day, Gallo Winery and other, you know, the farmers. So we're in extreme shortage on this side over here. So if people can, you know, always conserve more water, I think, you know, I don't know if it's enough, but we, we're going to have to, in rainy years, we're going to have to flood, you know, farmers used to flood, you know, we still do, but flood water so you can percolate the water and recharge your groundwater. Otherwise, the future is going to be very expensive for everybody, not just the farmers, and we all have to, you know, pay for groceries and everything, all the food in our tables. So the, the future is looking very tough. Also, the numbers for redistricting the population for, under the census is, I think it came out at 281,000 population numbers in the county, so that leads to 56,000 people per districts, including mine. So from what I know is, my district came out like 6,000 below, below the 56,000. So we're going to have to, you know, some districts have more, some districts have less, but District Two, which is City of Merced, and District Five in Los Banos has a lot more population due to the growth from the Bay Area moving into the Los Banos area mostly. And also people moving into the City of Merced, you know, bigger cities tend to grow a lot more too. So we're going to have to work on that. And what I stress to my board is that the best deal to, to make a better map of the districts would be to divide the City of Merced into three or, or four districts for the whole county. And that way, we could, you know, piece of the pie from, for the City of Merced and then, like District Two only has a majority of, portion of District Two, which is a small, small district, while District Four, Four, One, and Five is the biggest, but unnecessarily less population in our district. So we're going to have to deal with that. And our, also, our next meeting will be next week, September 14th and September 21. And I believe we'll be approving the budget for 2021, 2022. And if any questions, be glad to answer questions or if you can give me a call or after, outside the meeting. So any other questions from the board or the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to city staff announcements and reports. Do we have any city staff presenting tonight?
I don't have any city staff presenting at this moment. Fire? No items to report. No items to report.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move on to city management announcements and reports.
I don't have any items to report tonight.
Thank you. City council member, members announcements and reports. We start off with Councilmember King. Councilmember Jose Moran.
Not too much, but just a few items to report on. On August 27th, I participated in a Merced Immigration Roundtable, which basically it's a group of different organizations from throughout the Central Valley coming together and trying to figure out what's current, what's new, and, and how they can help or how we can help our different communities all throughout the Central Valley. And I also shared the opportunity in October within, within one of our street fairs organized by the Recreation Department, where we are going to have our DACA and Immigration Festival or Fair. And just basically a lot of different booths, different organizations coming from throughout Central and Northern California to provide information for our communities in regards to DACA and special programs for students to continue their further education and college level and universities and others. So that was on August 27th. And so I was saving this for Jackie, but since, but I'll just take the opportunity to, so DACA and that immigration fair will be on October 21st within, within the street fair. And then we are, there's going to be the Community Health Fair on October the 14th. And on October the 28th, I am going to celebrate my birthday by coming down and having, I guess we're going to have a pet fair and parade. So we're going to be, I'm going to be spending my birthday with a lot of pets at the street fair. So this is going to be within, within the street fairs organized by the Recreation Department. So on the 7th, on the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th. And just real quick, just taking the opportunity to wear my Livingston Lions hat. On October, well, for October the 13th, right now Livingston Lions is selling tickets for a baby back ribs dinner with macaroni and coleslaw. And it's going to be a great, great meal. So for everyone that wants to participate and support what Livingston Lions does here in the community, please see any Lion members for tickets. I will do home delivery, so just send me your name and, and they're only, only $20 each. And, and I also wanted to take the opportunity to mention that we still have, or the city still has a self-help organization providing support and assistance for, for the residents of Livingston in regards to their mortgage, their rent, mortgage, and utility bill support. And all they have to do is just call and see if they qualify based on their household number and their income. And, you know, this is a great opportunity to, the money is there, I mean, you just have to apply. And the money has to be used, so might as well use it for, for those residents that need help. And, and I just wanted to mention something besides, and part of my reporting comments. I, I do want to ask the attorney to please try and not, to try and be a little bit more professional in regards to some of the, kind of, that back and forth, which sometimes is not appropriate, in my opinion. I know you have said that you have close to 30 years of professional experience. I mean, that is just my comment, in my opinion. And to Monica, I just wanted to ask real quick, it is my understanding that there's, or that there was a resident, David Blevins, that submitted an email, a comments via email. And this was, unless he sent it to a different email, but I know that he did mention, and he sent me a copy of his email, just as an FYI, but I'm not sure if he sent it to the correct email. But I'm, I'm sure that he will be asking why his comments were not read or included in the public comments. Do you know anything about that?
No, I checked the email and I didn't see any unless he sent it after the time that we have specified.
This was yesterday, so at least 24 hours ago.
Oh, it was yesterday?
Yeah.
I didn't see anything for.
Okay, so if he, well, I know he will probably be reaching out and I'll just tell him to try and resend it again to hopefully the correct email. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Maria Soto.
Just a few. I appreciate Mario Mendoza's comments in regards to the VFW. I do advocate for many of the activities that they provide for our community as well as for the nation. There are two scholarship opportunities for our youth here in Livingston and throughout the nation. One is the Voice of Democracy, which the deadline is October 31st. They did send those out to the high school for them to participate. It's an audio essay competition. The grand prize for National Wonder is $30,000. So again, putting those scholarships out there for our youth and encouraging our high school to participate. They've been given some of the, the applications and the criteria to apply and work towards their essays. There is also a Patriots PIN, which is for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Those will be given out to the Livingston Union School District. And I do have the support of Andres Zamora. He did attend our Lions meeting and did support our patriotism. There is also Illustrating America, which is an art contest for students, grades one through eight. If there are interests in this, and I am hoping that there are, there has been little participation in it because it hasn't been highly promoted. I would like to see that our, our schools participate, our youth participate in it because again, these are scholarship opportunities and recognition for our youth and their patriotism throughout the nation. The Livingston Dell High VFW Post and Auxiliary will be having a BUNCO, which is September 18th. If there are interests, it's a really fun opportunity for community members to get together and participate. And that's about it. Thank you. Oh, just one more thing. I do appreciate again, our city attorney and our city manager and their roles that they do have on behalf of the city. I, I understand that there, there are some conflicts of, just conflicts within our community and it's, it's, based on some of the postings that you do see come across Facebook, I don't try to keep up on it as much, but again, they're brought to our council chambers where there really is no room for it. So again, those comments that are put out there, again, that's in social media land. If we'd like to better utilize that to make our city grow, that would be much appreciated. And I'm sure that we spent about 40 minutes going back and forth about issues in regards to efforts that are being pushed on our citizens. Again, there is a time and a place, and I believe that our city attorney has tried to make it clear that we try to take care of city business here, not personal issues and threats where, you know, I appreciate Mario Mendoza supporting some of the issues, but again, he ended it on a note where he said that there are people coming next meeting to either expose, not too sure how he stated it, but again, city business, welcome the opportunity to respond. Otherwise, please contact me. I have an email address and a phone number that I can share if the public would like to discuss anything other than city business while I am up here on the dais. Thank you.
Mayor Portum Garcia.
Negative, I don't have anything to report at this time.
Thank you. As regards to myself, I attended the MCAG meeting a couple of weeks ago, continually working with the interim city manager to address a lot of the concerns, including that corner you mentioned, you know, trying to come up with different ideas to, to better our city, address some of the landscaping issues, some of the projects that have fallen behind and just get to work. But that's pretty much it for me. I know that, city attorney, want to make comment?
Yes, Councilmember Moran reminded me of the question I had for everybody. And, well, first of all, I, I'm not going to apologize for trying to stop this from being a reality TV show. I mean, that's what I heard when I was hired and anyway, I'll keep it to that. But I do have a question that somebody had asked before about us not having cell phones on the dais. Is that something the council wants to consider? We can bring that back at a future meeting?
I would support that, yeah.
Councilmember Moran? Are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll do that, thank you.
Thank you. Going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. On the consent calendar, considered routine or non-controversial will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or city manager request a specific item be removed. I know we do have two items, item number five and number eight, that have been separated for further discussion. So at this time, in regards to the rest of the consent agenda, do you have any motions?
I move to approve the consent agenda. And Pauline, once again, just number five and number eight.
Motion by Councilmember Jose Moran. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Maria Soto. We get roll call, Monica?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Portum Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by vote of 5-0.
Thank you, Monica. We're going to go ahead and move on to item number five, which is the fiscal year 2021, 22 staffing changes and revised job description for Public Services Director, which is adopting a resolution approving severations for fiscal year 21, 22 and revised job descriptions for Public Services Director. Councilmember Jose Moran, you pulled this item. We have specific questions regarding this item?
Yes, so, well, first of all, I, it was just kind of weird for me to kind of see it under the consent agenda, something this important. I thought I was expecting to see it on the regular agenda, but, but yes, you know, more than anything, I did have a conversation with Ms. Portillo a little bit earlier today to kind of, based on the report and how it was presented, it was very difficult for me to visualize the path behind this, this proposal. And it's just difficult to understand how we were, we need to, or the way it is proposed to transition from a public directors, from a Public Works Director to Public Service Director. And then especially having to, since this revised job description is asking to also, one, to supervise planning, engineering, and building, and taking away the responsibilities or the, or the qualifications or the requirements for, for testing, which was one of the main items in the, in the current job requirements for Public Works Director. So maybe I can ask Vanessa to kind of help. I'm sure that if I had the same question, I'm sure there's other members out in the community that might have the same question. And so if, Vanessa, if you can share a little bit of your reasoning behind this proposal?
Absolutely. Mayor, council members, Vanessa Portillo and interim city manager, as you know, we have a recent vacancy of the Public Works Director. I took this vacancy as the, as an opportunity to just evaluate and assess the needs of the city and the departments. Within the, within those needs, I feel that we have a community development department with many overlapping duties from, between the consultants and community development, with the consultants in public works, our engineers, our building inspectors, that in order for our development community and our employees will definitely benefit from having one director that will be, that will be the liaison between these two departments. I had explained before that in a bigger community, a public works director and a community development director would be ideal. That's what bigger cities have. However, we are not there yet. And we're trying, and within the efforts of trying, we need to, we need to ensure that our development and our business community and our employees, they all have the adequate service and the adequate level of management and go-to person to ask the questions, to, to get answers from. And proposing this, this, this oversight of a public services director, many other cities that are comparable within the size of the City of Livingston, they, they use this model of having a public services director oversee the duties of the city, the community development and the public works department. And, and I felt that at this moment, that model would work for us, especially because we have a lot of development within the pipeline, whether it is commercial or business, industrial, and those are, those are the, the, you know, the customers that we really need, would like to attract and to ensure that they're getting service, they're getting the answers they need, and they're getting, they're, they're able to get helped when, when they're going through their development process. And, and hopefully we can speedy up some of that and they don't have to wait a long time in order to get their projects complete. And our city will, will start collecting some sales taxes or property taxes on that.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Okay, so also in addition to that, within looking at the, the staff report on page one of the staff report, at the bottom paragraph where it says additionally, in the last two sentences, well, the last three, or just, or the last complete, well, the last complete sentence, where it says, "It is proposed to revise the job description of, of the vacant public works director position and rename it Public Service Director with operational oversight of the planning, engineering, and public works functions." So just, well, I'm not sure if I'm not, you know, just the way it is described is just operational oversight is just meaning supervising. I actually, not necessarily doing anything else, but I'm sure there, I'm sure, we're hoping that they will be doing any work. But in, on page one of the actual job description, where it says job summary, you know, basically the entire job summary was crossed out, and a new job summary, it's suggested, which reads, "Under general administration direction of the city manager, to serve as the principal administrative officer for Public Works Department, to plan, direct, review, and manage department activities in operational focus, focused on providing a wide range of public services activities and to perform other duties as required, which will include planning, developing, and building activities, functional and services." And then again, under essential duties and responsibilities, on the first sentence, "Plan, organize, control, and direct public works operational activities, including the monitoring water, wastewater." So just the wordage, you know, just the wording is like monitor, supervise. And then, in bullet number four, direct and manage is crossed out, and then again, it's added as monitors, the wastewater treatment plant, you know, I mean, the way, the way it's presented right now, to me, it just looks like it's just, we're asking to hire or for someone to apply just to come and monitor and supervise, and that's it. So, you know, and then on page three or four of the actual description of the duties, where it says licenses, certifications, and other requirements, the only thing left there is just, just a valid California Class C driver's license. Grade T2 water treatment certificate is crossed out or deleted. D3 water distribution operator's license is deleted. Grade III wastewater treatment plant operator certificate is deleted. Grade IV or D4 water distribution certificate, which is highly desirable, it's also deleted. So I think for the most part, I mean, it looks like, you know, most of the main items were deleted out of this, the previous, previous job duties and description. And now we're just looking for someone to just come and supervise and analyze and make recommendations and, and with operational oversight. So almost probably 99% of the people here can probably apply for that position, you guys will probably get it, because all they're asking for is just a degree and a, and a driver's license. So make sure you guys have your driver's license. But it just, it just, I just, I don't know, it just, I just need maybe more, 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 more input, more information and to, for, just to make sense, to do away from what we already have, into something totally different that, that it just doesn't seem like, it just needs to make sense.
So what do you want to do? You want to have further, you want to have a sit-down, Vanessa, kind of have further discussion?
Well, I think that probably, you know, I, I do want to hear what the rest of the council has to say and their opinions, and then just kind of go from there and then figure out if, if the rest of the council has good arguments and, you know, good points and just to move forward, or if not, just to try and continue it and further have a conversation? I don't know. You know, right now I'm just hearing what I, what I just said and that's it. So I do, I do want to hear what, what the rest of the council has to say, you know, maybe there's, there's more information that would help me better understand in addition to what, the quick conversation that we had or that I had with Vanessa earlier today.
Okay. Council, any other, you guys want to have any input, opinion on regarding this item?
I believe Mr. Moran does his own research and... I believe Mr. Moran does his own research, and therefore, he is capable of making his own decision, because he did remove this item based on the fact that he doesn't understand. I'm not seeing why we need to provide the information for him.
Thank you. In regards to myself, obviously, we had conversations regarding this item and tried to understand where you're coming from. So, you know, I appreciate you thinking out of the box and trying to, considering that, you know, there's different departments and having some oversight with those departments, like you stated earlier, they overlap a lot. So just having the additional support here, here, you know, since we do contract those other departments, it makes sense. So do you want to just talk a little bit in regards to like the licensing, who would have, hold those licenses and all that, maybe clarify a little bit more?
Absolutely. Back in May of this year, the city council approved the water wastewater manager position, which the job description of that position holds accountability for doing the state reports, and it is a requirement to hold the treatment certificates. So this, this requirements here for the public services director would be an overlap from the water and wastewater manager position that we have approved and available. So it is deemed that this position, it would be the one that would be producing the, or signing off on the state reports and the mandated items that need to be provided to the state.
Okay. Thank you, Vanessa, for clarifying that. Council, any other questions or comments at this time? All right, we'll take it out for, go ahead.
So I do appreciate the comments and like I do, I do give my students the opportunity. I did want to give everyone here on the dais the same opportunity and give everyone the benefit of the doubt. Maybe there was some other information that, additional ideas that could help me better understand the reasoning and to have a further discussion. And like I said, just giving everyone the benefit of the doubt, just like I do with my kids in the classroom. Thank you.
Just to add to it, I know that it's not as simple as having somebody with a driver's license. I know that obviously, you're going to be looking, we're seeking for somebody that has some experience in that field, that could provide that leadership. I think that's something we've talked about, providing some, having somebody who has that leadership and, you know, being able to supervise, you know, a big group of employees in different departments.
Absolutely. One of the requirements, it's for the public works director to have an engineering background, or I believe that our department would benefit tremendously from having that kind of background or business administration or construction management. Those are all fields where definitely will overlap some of the functions within the public works and the community development department.
Perfect.
Maybe, is there, is there, I know that you worked at a previous city. Is there, was there a similar position like this there? Or, and kind of that inspired you to come up with this vision, this new idea, or?
No, no. I mean, like, the city that I used to work at, it was a little bit bigger than Livingston, so there was, and it was development heavy. At the moment, they were developing 11,000 units, so it needed to have a separate director for each one of those departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this time, we'll take it out for any public comment regarding this item?
Catherine Shell Rodriguez, and I'm going to, and I'm not going to insult Mr. Moran's intelligence by implying that he can't understand something. I looked through the entire job description, and it is obvious, if you count the lines, that the grand majority of the job description is from the public works director job description. Under the essential duties and responsibilities section, it is all from the public works director's job description. There are no specific additions specific to the planning or engineering departments. Under qualifications, the knowledge requirements are all from the public works job description. There are no specific additions to expand the knowledge base, to include items specific to the planning and engineering department. Same with the abilities section. The whole thing is from the public works director's job description. Not only that, but as was mentioned, it removes any requirements for water and wastewater licenses and certifications. I think the way this job description is written is extremely problematic. At least 90% of it applies to public works. Doesn't public works need a lot of oversight just on its own? How could one person effectively oversee public works and planning and engineering? How are we supposed to stay in compliance with state reporting? Are we going to hire a contractor until you get around to hiring a water waste and water manager? Or, and either way, that should not be the city's only reliance for operational compliance. If that other person suddenly leaves or is terminated, the director should have the licenses and certifications necessary to keep us, the city, in compliance with the state, especially given Livingston's water quality issues and the state's TCP order. There are some who believe that you already have somebody in mind for this position already, because it should be more difficult to add planning experience to the job description and expect to find someone just by removing water and sewer certifications. Again, given Livingston's current issues with water quality, the focus should be finding a public works director with the proper certifications and not changing job descriptions at this point in time.
Any other citizen comments?
Yeah, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I got a comment. My name is Tommy Mejia, and I just wanted to be able to educate people a little bit on how this position was running prior. So we had a public works director in place that has licenses, but the last current public works director, ever since his tenure here, the water and wastewater was always ran with the operator's license. So I ran it, there was two operators that ran it prior to me for the two years, and then I came in and I ran water and wastewater under my licenses for two years. And then I stepped down because of matters that will be attended too, but it's record, you can see on the state report, that the public works director, I think, he only ran it for maybe four or five months out of his tenure here. And that was just the wastewater plant and then one specific well, well 16. So it was just to educate people so they know it wasn't, had the license responsibility the whole time he was here, because that's not how it was. But you could find that information in the state report. And just so people are aware, I hear some of the questions there's asking, there's a little confused, like they don't, they're not aware. Thank you.
All right. Any additional citizen comments?
Okay. Here we go. I have a question, because I do job description and create position all the time for the county office of education and then for the school district. My question is, now that Catherine mentioned that the job descriptions are the same, but because you deleted one, two, three, four certifications or credentials, or whatever requirements that you call it, that means that this position is going to get way less, right, than the public work director? Because if you don't need credentials and certifications, you should not be compensated for something we are not going to use. I'm all forward on merging positions, because that is how you save money. But at the same time, when you merge and you are saving money, and if he's somebody who going to oversee it all, how are you going to oversee somebody if you don't know the job? So are we going to save substantial amount of money? Not $20,000. That is $1,600 a month, that is pocket change for a lot of people here. So what is, it is going to, the savings on salaries and benefits, a substantial amount, $50,000 at least, because one, two, three, four certifications that you're erasing, we going to save a lot of money, because we don't have to pay somebody, no offense, but five years increasing, like a supervising public work, and three years of management, nobody should be getting paid no more than $60,000 a year for this position in this city. If you pay more than that, you are just giving money away. And with salary and benefit, that is 30%, 30 to 35%, depending, oh no, they are no bargaining unit because it's management, it should not be more than $80,000 with salary and benefits, no more than that, because this is very little requirements for, to oversee something that is pretty much monitoring with a clipboard going around. So that person cannot be getting paid more than that. So how much money are we saving merging those positions?
It is still the public works director position, so the salary, it's still the same as the salary schedule. We're not changing the salary.
But you are, but right now that you are changing position, and you are reducing requirements, you can save money on that one.
There's still, council member mayor, there's still an education requirement. Hopefully, we get someone with an engineering or management background, and in order to ensure that we attract quality candidates, we need to remain competitive.
Yeah, but you're talking about public administration, engineering, or is engineering or is public administration? Because the set of skills is different. My question go back of why have to be, it should be salary savings and of course, benefit, because you are reducing a total amount of credential. If you are reducing the credential, you should reduce the salary. Anybody in management knows that, because you are making it like a bare minimum. Bare minimum, anybody could come in and say, hey, I meet this qualification, I need an interview. Because why you going to pay that director the same if he doesn't have all those certification and credentials? That is my question. Because if you are not doing the job, why you going to get compensated for it?
Mayor, council members, in submitting this job description, I believe that we are adding oversight to this position, and therefore, it is, it's a position that requires a lot more structure, and we need some candidate, and we're looking for a candidate that has a foundation in management in order to set in place some structure within our departments and to ensure that our developers and our customers are helped the way that they deserve to be helped.
Thank you, Vanessa.
But you said that is the same as public works. So it's no salary savings?
No, it's the same, the same salary. We're not changing salaries.
So it won't be a decrease on salary pay because?
No, there's not.
No. So it's no extra duties for what I see here and the job, and the thing, so we going to pay somebody to do less?
Okay.
But we going to keep the salary?
Thank you for your comment.
Oh, no. Thank you for the information. It's been a great education for everyone out there.
Any further comments regarding this item?
Letitia Vazquez here again. So I read some of the information that was shared, and I thought it said that we were saving $10,000.
There are two items in the staff report. One of them, it's a staff revision, which it encompasses a position that was approved as part of the budget for the community development department, and it's the senior planner position. We were approved that position, we run the recruitment, and it was unsuccessful. We couldn't have, we didn't have any candidates for the position. And in reality, our community development department, it's in need of administrative support. So we are requesting for the senior planner position to be unfunded and for the senior admin analyst to be refunded, and that is the $10,000 savings.
Okay. So you also stated that there was another position that was approved back in May, and that it seems like that person is going to be the one with the certificate to approve the state requirement reports.
That is correct.
Is that what I understood?
Yes.
Okay. So then, the public works director's duty of approving the state reports when it comes to water and sewer, is now going to be approved by another person that we already have on staff?
We don't.
We don't, okay.
So the position, it's vacant at the moment.
Okay. And so my understanding, and I don't understand much of it, but I did some research, that it seems like those reports need to be done consistently. So when are those reports due, and do we have anybody to approve them or submit them or whatever that?
There are monthly reports that we have to submit, and currently, I'm working on a contingency plan to have a consulting firm to provide, to submit those reports to the state in order for the city to remain compliant.
And so how much would we spend on that? Is it free?
It's not free, consulting work.
Yes.
They have a price. They run about $2,000 a month.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
Any other comment regarding this item? Or bring it back for council for any further questions or motions?
If I can, I do have one more question. And just to be, and I was looking here, but I didn't see it, and I forgot to ask earlier, what is, what is the current salary of the public works director?
I believe it ranges between $113,000 and $125,000, but I'll have to confirm that with you.
So it's around, around $113,000, $125,000?
There's a range.
Yeah, that range. So that will be the same amount moving forward for this new proposed?
For the job description changes. Correct. It's a public works director, just with oversight of planning and community development engineering.
Okay. So about $150,000, $120,000 or so. Okay. Thank you.
Council? Motion, direction?
I'll make the motion.
The motion to approve by Mayor Protem Garcia. Who has a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Maria Soto. Could we get roll call, Monica?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
No.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four, one.
We go to our item number eight, which is the Livingston Youth Football Fee waiver request, which is adopt a resolution approving the Livingston Youth Football Association fee waiver request.
Okay. Just give me a minute, because we got a different agenda this time, and just try and figure out which page. Well, I think that, well, there's a couple of questions, and I think it was, and I also forgot to meet with, actually, to make time to meet with the recreation department to understand, I'm looking at the first and second calendar on the, in the, in the report, and maybe- And maybe, I'm not sure if this, Jackie, if this is your, your, okay. So, and I was trying to understand, and I think I got it, but I guess I have to go along with my questions just to make sure that I understand it completely and 100%. So there's a highlighted number amount, 46, 67 per day use fee. And then there's lights, $20 per hour minimum. And in the, on the bottom of that calendar, there's another highlighted section that says, if we charge the city, we'll lose $177.45. But in the report says that, that the City Council of the City of Livingston does hereby, you know, if we, if we approve this, we would be out of $1,260. So I was trying to figure out how those $1,260 came up. And then also, my other question was in regards, there's also notes here on page, there's no page here. There's some handwriting that says, this is SenCal's and not the proper form providing nonprofit status. And, and I'm aware, well, I'm assuming that this is like a, this, is this a 501(c)(3) organization? Or are we, or is this organization under the umbrella of SenCal to, to be covered for the nonprofit status? And the other question was that if we do this for one organization, what we do for one, we should do for all. So we have more organizations here in the community, which I'm all supportive of, of young kids' recreational opportunities. I mean, totally. But, so those were just some of the questions that I have so far that, that I wanted to get more information about.
So I'm hoping?
Test. What I'm hoping, that I can, without looking at all of these numbers, making it kind of simple. We have not had a fee increase for, since 2008. So the wage that we are collecting, like if we had somebody come out and watch this facility while the kids are playing, would cost us almost $18 an hour. We're only collecting 14. So all my little notes here were to show that if we charge them at the rate that our policy states right now, we would be losing however much money it was in here. On the report, the 1,300 or 1,200 dollars that it says that the city would not collect in revenue, it's not taking the expenses into account. It's just saying if we charge, this is the amount that we would charge them. But it does not reflect the loss of having to pay staff less or more than what we're charging.
Okay. So it would be 1,260 that would normally be in fees plus the amount that we have to pay city employee in overtime?
It's not overtime. It's just straight wage. Our minimum wage now is $14. And then you add 20% for unemployed, or, you know, all the little goodies we get from the state and the feds.
Okay. So it would be 1,260 plus 177 plus 141. Is that right? More or less? So total, it would be about 1,578, $1,600. Okay. Thank you, Jackie. So, so it would be close to 1,600. And in regards to the nonprofit status, is that, is that the actual organization is a nonprofit status? Or is that SenCal that is nonprofit?
We actually have the president here. Yeah, so they would probably be able to answer that. And I actually wrote this note on here because this is not the legit form that would classify them as nonprofit. And it's SenCal's number, not you guys'. So they may have an explanation to that. But if we're going to require this of everybody, then we need to at least have the proper identification.
Would they be able to answer that?
So I'm Chris Farinelli, the President of Livingston Wolves Youth Football and also the Commissioner of SenCal Youth Football. We do, they're both 501(c)(3) and they all fall into the same umbrella. So we can use the SenCal 501(c)(3) for our Livingston Wolves Youth Football.
So when, okay. All right. I'm kind of, well, because I'd done 501(c)(3)'s before and just, sometimes they're very, like, the state changes things all the time. But I just wanted to double check because I saw that note. So, so it's, so it's not that the 501(c)(3) is not under Livingston Youth Football League 501(c)(3), but SenCal? Just to be clear.
So both have a 501(c)(3). And our current 501(c)(3) for Livingston Wolves Youth Football is being redone by Mr. Brenner out of Merced, our CPA. And it's not fully active yet. That's why we're using our SenCal 501(c)(3).
Okay. Yeah, I don't, okay. I don't want to get, go into too much detail and ask why it was not current. Because normally, the state is pretty strict when it comes to the statuses. And if we don't submit any forms or whatever, by a certain amount of time, they'll like hold there and then we got to do, you know, or?
No, I, I totally understand and I agree. And I actually, I did try and reach out this morning. I think 10:30, I sent you a text message, you know, to cover any of this information if you wanted and, yeah.
So eventually, if you would be able to provide Jackie with that 501(c)(3) under Livingston Youth Football League? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and, and I think the only other question or the only other question besides the, the total amount of 1,578 was that, you know, because I'm sure that there are going to be other organizations that are going to come forward after this and say, well, how about us? How about, you know? So, and, and once again, I mean, we're all for, very supportive. I mean, I don't, well, I can only speak, let me just speak, speak for myself. But I'm very supportive of recreational opportunities for kids. You know, anything that we can do to keep them off the streets, entertained and out of trouble. But right now, I'm wearing my City Councilman hat. So those, those are my questions and concerns.
May I make another comment, Jose? So one of the things that we do have in place in our policy is we check teams to see what their resident level is. And I do have to say that youth football is the highest of any of our leagues. As a matter of fact, right now, they are probably the only league that is a resident team with like 90% of their kids living here in Livingston. 97. So when, when you were talking about other people coming and asking, they would need to fulfill that requirement too, really before they could even ask for a fee waiver and be legit.
Which, which will be what? Have above 90%?
They have to be 75% enrolled to be a resident team the way our policy sits now.
All right. Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
If I can make another comment? In reference to, you know, like any other agencies or nonprofits that would like to come forward and request this type of fee waivers. It is part of our recreation policy that if fee waivers are approved by either City Council or City Manager. So it's been past practice that the City Manager has done the fee waivers. However, I, I feel that it is a fiscal best practice to bring these items forward to City Council. And this is one of, this is the first time you're seeing this. However, you know, this waiver has been approved in the past. So we'll be implementing the City Council route to, to bring these items forward. So you'll be seeing these items in the future.
Thank you, Vanessa. That was my question, just how we did it in the past. But thanks for answering that. Because I know it was, it's not the first time we, we do this. Any other questions, counsel? We'll take it out for public comment regarding this item. Any public comment? You have one public comment?
Hi, I actually just had a question for Jackie. I was a little unclear on some of the information you were giving. So I just wanted to clarify. When you were saying that if we were charging them, the, I think it was like 1,200 dollars amount, that's not taking into consideration the cost of having an employee go out there? So if the fees are being waived, or is there no involvement with the city employee having to go out there?
That is correct. They check out keys and then they are willing to pay the direct cost of the lighting. So they will give us a monthly check for whatever costs they incur from the lights.
Okay. So even if we were to charge them, there would still be some cost to the city that we would have to incur if we chose to charge those fees?
That is correct.
You guys want to say any comments or anything else? You're good? Okay. All right. Bring it back to council. Any additional comments or direction, motions?
Do I make the motion?
A motion by Mayor Protem Garcia. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember King. Could we get roll call, Monica?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our public hearing, which is a resolution approving the General Plan Amendment 2021-01 for the Tierra Santa Villa's apartment at 915 B Street. Randy, will be taking this item?
Okay. What we have before you are a series of approvals for the Tierra Sanchez Villas Apartments. And these are 80 apartments located in six buildings. And first, let's take a look at the location of it. This is a kind of a vicinity map where the star is located. It's on the north side of B Street. East, quite a bit east of B's intersection with Wynton Parkway. It's just under four acres in size. Let's go back. And presently, this property is part of the vacant land that is east of Rancho San Miguel. And that land is all zoned for service commercial and has a general plan density, a general plan designation of service commercial. Well, you can't have apartment buildings in commercially zoned general, commercially zoned land or general plan land. So the first thing that has to be done is a general plan amendment and a rezone. And then this would, could immediately then be considered for a site plan design review, which the code requires for any project that has more than 25 dwelling units. This has 80 dwelling units. So yes, it meets that threshold. So then a site plan design review is required. And as part of all of those approvals, there is the, the state environmental processing. So we have to go through the California Environmental Quality Act process, SEQA for short. And so that's kind of the setup of what is before you. Now, the, a little hard to see here for the, the audience, but, but this is kind of a breakdown of what the proposal is. There are five buildings that would have residential apartments. And a sixth building, which has the community center for the apartment residents with space for staff and leasing offices. There's a childcare facility on site. And then there are community rooms that would, would have computer terminals and so forth for the benefit of the residents. Now, there's a breakdown of 48 of these 80 units would be two-bedroom units. And 32 of the 80 units would be three-bedroom units. That's one of the things that our housing element that we prepared a few years back indicated that there is a great need for larger bedroom units for families. And this is designed as a family-oriented apartment community. Now, there are parking spaces. We'll go to the site plan. Again, this is the location, a little bit easier to see where it's, it's located on undeveloped land at this point. And here is the overall site plan. And yes, it is difficult to see. Make sense of this, where the red dot is, is B Street. There is a gated, there's a loop entry around the perimeter. And there are, there's gates here with a few parking spaces outside of the gate. And there's also a gate located at the southern. No, it's not the southern. That's the, I believe, the western entrance. And the, this, right at the, at the northeastern entrance to the facility is where the offices are, the, the center for the residents, where the leasing offices are. And the childcare center is located where I have the, the red dot now. The childcare center would have a dedicated outdoor area as a play space. The community rooms and so forth also have access to different patio areas. There's a community patio area here, which would be a recreation, as is highlighted here illustratively, is a half-court basketball and so on. And there also is a central landscaped open area for, it's a grassy area with some trees. I'll be showing a landscape plan later on. And this area is kind of a free-form area for the residents' use. Now, the big item here is that there are two three-story apartment buildings. And the apartment buildings are just under 40 feet in height. And the balance of the, the buildings, the other three of the five residential buildings would be two stories in height. And each type of building has a mix of the three-bedroom units and the two-bedroom units. Now, there is a total of 142 parking spaces located around. Now, there is a total of 142 parking spaces located around the perimeter, which is more than enough per our zoning code for both the residents and guests. So there's a lot of parking that is being provided. In addition to the total number of parking spaces, six, there are six handicap parking stalls. There are six electric vehicle charging stalls, and there are twelve spaces that are for clean air vehicles, which could be propane vehicles, or, I'm thinking, I can't think of the name right now, but these ones that they use, there's some kind of a cell, they're not a solar cell, but it's a fuel cell, fuel cell vehicles. And I don't think we have a lot of those vehicles on the road right now, but it is something that the state is pushing the automakers to provide. And so this proposal is looking ahead toward providing for those clean fuel vehicles. Let's see here. Let me move forward a little bit. Now, this is an example of a, of one of the two three-story buildings. And what you see are the colors and materials that are shown. So what we have for the colors is, let me get to my listing here, bear with me. Where is it? But, as you can see, they're, they're earth tones. There is a Mediterranean type of styling in the colors and the architecture, and there is, the colors are delineated and specified. And so as we go through the construction phase and before final approval, there will be inspections that not only look at building requirements, but there'll be landscape inspection, and there'll be an inspection to verify the colors and materials as specified and as This is an example of the two-story structures. There, there are three of these. And the apartment units in the three-story and the two-story are the same, the three-bedroom units have the same configuration regardless of whether in a two-story building or a three-story building, the same thing with the two-bedroom unit. I think it's important to note that all of the accessible units are located on the first floor because there are no elevators. Access to the second and for the third floor are all through stairs, and each building has a number of different stairs. And so a big part of that is cost, because, I hadn't mentioned it yet, but these are all affordable apartments. They, the builder and developers, Visionary Homes, and they are a nonprofit builder, which has a long record in the Central Valley of applying for and receiving federal and state grants for affordable housing, building, maintaining, and continuing to own those buildings. The, it's important to note that Visionary does not sell off their portfolio to other users that does some kind of a partnership or what have you to get, to distribute the tax credits. So they own and maintain and manage their portfolio. So that's, that's a key difference between Visionary and some other nonprofit builders, because they are the ones that built it, they're the ones that we can count on for at least twenty years to maintain it, because the, the loans and grants they get from the federal and state government to make this an affordable project have a twenty-to-thirty year term on them. Now, the units are, I mentioned, they were affordable, and they're affordable based upon the area-wide median income, which is a real wonky term, but it's, it's defined by both the state and federal governments. They look at the median income for Livingston, and, and based upon family size, and then these will be available, thirty percent, or sixteen of the units, would be available at the thirty percent of median income level. So that's quite low for those sixteen units, and they're divided between nine two-bedroom and seven three-bedroom. And then another forty percent of the units, twenty-six units, would be affordable to those at the forty percent of area-wide median income, sixteen two-story, ten three-story. And then there would be thirty-seven units that would be available at the fifty percent of area-wide median income, twenty-three two-bedroom, fourteen three-bedroom. So in the, the world of affordable housing, that's a big deal, to have, you know, these units that would be available at the thirty percent level, forty percent level, and fifty percent level. And this is an example of the community building, what it looks like. And here is the landscape plan that I wanted to show you. And it shows that this is heavily landscaped. You can see the central spine right in here. This is the open space area that will have grass and, and these trees. There's a wide variety of, of trees that are located here. I've reviewed all the trees, and they're all drought-tolerant trees, and they comply with the, the city's drought-tolerant standards. There's a variety like, there are bigger shade trees, like the Diodor cedar and the live oak, medium-sized shade trees such as Chinese pistachio and Zelikovo, narrow polymer shade trees such, such as the Princeton century gecko and, and crepe myrtle and Saratoga laurel. And the whole idea is, is that there's a variety of landscaping and drought-tolerant trees to give beauty and variety to the, to the, to the landscaping. The project will take some time to build out, but they anticipate building it all at one time. And so the first would be grading, excavation, site preparation, and the provision of utilities. Then the second would be the construction of the actual buildings themselves, and then the final is the installation of the roads, hardscape, gates, perimeter fencing, and landscaping. Now, the utilities will all be coming from B Street, where they exist presently. And so there is a twenty-seven inch diameter sewer line in B Street, so they'll use that. And there is a twelve-inch diameter water line in B Street, so they'll tap into that. And, you know, as part of this project, I referred it to our utilities, and yes, we have capacity to have, have service to this project. Now, this project, as I mentioned, is subject to California environmental guidelines. And so as part of that, an initial study and a proposed negative declaration was developed. And as, that basically meant that, at the approval of city staff, Visionary hired a environmental consultant, which, using the standards from the state, they prepared, and what's this called, an initial study, which analyzed the project in accordance with a wide variety of environmental criteria defined by the state. And there were some areas that, yeah, this is, this is a big project, so it's going to affect some things. It is going to have traffic, it is going to use water and our sewer capabilities. And so then, as part of that project, they're proposing mitigation measures. And so mitigation measures, if they reduce the effects so that they're not significant anymore, that's how SEQA works. And so as part of this process, they identified what those mitigation measures are, and they developed a mitigation monitoring program, and that is part of the proposed adoption. So they would do those mitigations, it'll be part of their approval process. And so as an example, they, they will be paying substantial impact fees to, to the city, which are used to deal with park and recreation impacts, police impacts, and fire impacts. They're also required, as part of the conditions, to annex into our recent community facilities district, which has an ongoing yearly assessment to pay for ongoing impacts and ongoing operations of police, recreation, fire, and the like. So because of that, their project is fully mitigated for environmental issues. And in your proposed resolution, the first resolution is to adopt the negative declaration, which, with its associated mitigation monitoring program, which has all those conditions. So this, this project has a lot of pieces and parts. After the environmental approval resolution, the next resolution is to change, or rather amend, the general plan, to go from what it is now, which is commercial, to a high-density designation. Then there is an ordinance for your introduction and first reading that would rezone this from community commercial to high-density residential. That does have to come back to you, since it is an ordinance, so it will come back to you, hopefully, the next meeting for second reading and final adoption. And then there is the site plan design review, which looks at all the operating conditions in terms of the, the architecture, the material, the site layout, and all of these features that I've been trying to describe here. And so that's all subject to the site plan design review. Since this is a project that has more than twenty-five units in it, it does also require a use permit. But the city codes say that a use permit can be approved by the planning commission. And so the planning commission did, in fact, review this project on August the 10th, and they did make recommendation for approval to the council of the environmental resolutions, the general plan resolution, the rezoning ordinance, the site plan design review resolution, and they did approve the use permit. So those have been accomplished. The fiscal impact of this project is that, you know, they do pay property taxes, and most importantly, those community facility district annual assessments. But perhaps more importantly, from the city's point of view, the project would address the city's housing needs, as demonstrated in our housing element. And if you've been following somewhat all the things at the state level, there's been a lot of legislation and new laws and a lot of activity about housing and making it more affordable. And there's been a lot of comments by the state legislature and others that cities aren't doing enough to provide for housing of all types, most particularly affordable housing, but even market-rate housing. This would go a long way in demonstrating to the state that we are participating in our fair share of providing for housing. This has been, you know, our housing element does have goals and, and targets, and so this will help to meet those targets. And as I mentioned, it's really hard to get affordable housing, and so this goes a long way toward addressing the city's affordable housing needs. Okay, I've talked quite a bit about all of these items. It's important to note that this affordability is not a one-shot deal. As part of the fact that these, this developer is owning, operating, and managing the units, and they have grants and loans from the state and federal government, there is an ongoing qualification. So as long as those loans are in effect, and it's, and it varies with the loan, but we're talking at least twenty to thirty years, this will remain affordable. Because Visionary, on an annual basis, excuse me, I got something in my mouth, will verify residents' income and make sure that they meet the qualifications. And it, it may be situation that someone that's in a thirty percent of area-wide median in, gets a great paying job, and they graduate up and maybe they're, then move forward into the fifty percent of, of area-wide median income and so on. And so it is monitored, and this will be maintained as an affordable housing project. And that's what, all the things I wanted to summarize, and so I think it may be an appropriate time for me to stop talking and to open it up to the council for any questions. I believe we have representatives from Visionary Homes here, and they may want to make a presentation and would be available to answer questions. And then after that, it's appropriate to open it up to the public for general questions.
Thank you, Randy, I appreciate it. Thank you for all the information and details about this project. I'll bring it up for any questions Council may have to Randy, and then I'll open that up to the developers that are here tonight. Council, any initial questions for Randy regarding this project at this time? Concerns, clarifications?
I understand that you said that there, the, as the project is, has increased in traffic, being that it is in a school zone, and that they're, they're mitigating for that. On the memorandum that they put, also that they are going to be doing all that they need to do in regards to the pedestrian easement, does that include walking zones for schools and lighting for crossing for, for children?
Um, they, they do. We'll be putting in- We'll be putting in, um, street lighting as part of the, the frontage improvements. But as of now, they are not, um, we have no requirement for them to have a lighted crosswalk, as an example. Um, that, that may be a good question to ask, since there is a, um, elementary school almost across the street.
I, I believe it would be a good thing to address with them, because I know that, I think it was maybe about, that, that the city had to go back and put in cross, lighted cross, crosswalks in front of the high school, and that did come to a cost at the, for the city. So I'm just saying, rather than put that cost onto the city, that, um, while they're at it, include that in part of their, um, memorandum for the safety of, of the children that may live across the street from the, uh, school.
We, we would have to do some analysis on that for, um, a fair share. We, it's inter, you can't put, um, a full burden on, on a developer. But, but you can, we can calculate how many, um, students this would generate, and that percentage, um, they could participate in that percentage of the, um, crosswalk costs. So it would help, yes. But that's one of the things that, um, and I'm sure the attorney can back me up, that it, it has to be, um, roughly proportional to, I think that's what the court said specifically, roughly proportional to the impacts generated by the new development.
I understand, I thank you, Randy. Again, that's the fair share, and that it will help address the traffic issues that will be on B Street, considering that it is already backed up during school hours. But adding to, all the units that are proposed to come in there will add to that traffic congestion and many people trying to cross in that area, making it a very, um, dangerous cross without the necessary school markings and crosswalks for the children that may live there. But thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Um, it's a, you know, great input, appreciate that. Uh, in regards, I just want to say thank you for the developers, and thank you for all the work that's gone, uh, towards this project. I know it's, uh, it's been, uh, some time coming. Uh, I appreciate the, you know, we're trying to address the city, the, the need for housing, uh, specif- specifically affordable housing here in our community. Obviously, uh, you know, it's, it's a big project, and there are some, you know, concerns, and appreciate council bringing those up. Uh, obviously, I think I, I reached out to Randy earlier today in regards to, um, the impact with, uh, you know, law enforcement and also fire, fire service. Um, and I know there is some, um, mitigation there, uh, in regards to those. Um, I, I also asked you about, you know, any development agreements, and you want to just touch bases on that?
Yeah, this, this project, um, is not, um, it's not appropriate for a development agreement for this. Because this, this project, um, is permitted with, um, a rezoning and a site plan design review, and it doesn't need any special concessions or special, um, allowances. And there are no unmitigated impacts, um, associated with this project. Those would be things that would, um, give the city, for lack of a better term, leverage in order to, um, propose a development agreement, where a, a city in saying, okay, well, you don't meet the parking standard, or you don't meet the, um, density standard. But we'll allow it if you enter into a development agreement, where, um, we will allow that in, in return for some, um, it's basically a contract that you're making with, um, a developer. And so that form of, um, development approvals, um, this isn't subject to it because they're not asking, and they don't need anything special. Um, our, um, codes, um, allow for this as it's proposed. And, yes, they have to mitigate their impacts, but that's standard throughout. That's not anything special.
Counsel, any other questions?
Uh, yes, um, Randy, so in regards to this project, has there been any feedback from not only the school across the street or the district in regards to any of the possible impacts of this, um, site construct, uh, build?
Well, as, as I mentioned, we, um, prepared a, um, environmental document, and that environmental document was circulated for 30 days. And it went to, it was published in the paper, in the legal ads, and, um, it was on the city's website, and, um, we posted it, and there was a, a wide variety of, um, the usual channels that public notices, uh, go to, especially for environmental documents. In addition to that, 10 days before this meeting, we mailed, uh, another notice of, of this item being before the council to all properties and residents within 300 feet of the site. So yes, it, it went to the school. And we have not received any comments, uh, on this. And, um, you know, we've gotten a few inquiries, what is this about? And I'd answer a few questions, and they say, okay, um, we, we don't have any, um, any further comments. So, um, so from my perspective, that is kind of unusual, and it's, um, a clean project in that respect.
All right, um, yeah, well, because I was wondering, you know, uh, especially kind of being across the street, but at the same time, right now, also, uh, I think some of the schools in the school, in the school district is glad that it's across the street, so they can just actually, well, alleviate some of the traffic, because they don't have to drive when they can just walk the kids across the street. So, and at the same time, this project, similar to others, will bring in more families, more kids to the school district, uh, which we have seen a de- uh, um, decline in students for the last almost eight years. So, thank you, Randy.
Okay, you're welcome.
I know we have, uh, it's Carol Ornellis, our, uh, from Visionary Homes. You want to just introduce yourself and your staff?
Good evening, Mayor Aguilar and city council members. My name is Carol Ornellis, and I'm the CEO of Visionary Home Builders. We're very pleased to be here tonight. Uh, this project, as, uh, Randy spoke about, uh, we've been working on it for about two years. Uh, we started off working with the Gallo Company, and, uh, to this date, we've got an architectural review team that's made up of Gallo and ourselves to make sure that what we have designed will be palatable for, uh, future development of the remaining acreage. As Randy talked about the mitigation in there, uh, we will be, uh, paying a school impact fee of about $5.65 per square foot. And that's, but goes to the school district to assist with anything that needs to be mitigated, um, based on the children coming into, uh, the development. But just a little bit about Visionary Home Builders. Uh, we are a nonprofit. We have been in business for over 35 years. Uh, primarily, we work up and down the Central Valley. We are one of the leading affordable housing, um, developers. I am so sorry, I thought. Developers in the Central Valley. We own and manage over 1,500 units. We've also developed over 1,000 Sequel family homes, because part of our mission is to build equity for families. And we see this, uh, multifamily housing as a stepping stone, and hopefully, uh, where our families will end up in the future would be into homeownership. We also believe very strongly in early education. All of our communities throughout the valley, uh, center around a Head Start facility, and that's what Randy described, and at the center of our project will be a Head Start community that will operate and will, um, bring early education to children from three to five. Because, um, as our board says, we're getting them ready for school, and we want all opportunities for our children that live in our communities. We also design our communities not just for those that, uh, live inside the community, and that's why you see our, uh, community center on the outer, because we assess the community to see what the needs are. We have plenty of space in our community center to bring in services. Uh, we have computer labs inside our community, because we know that the digital, um, desert for, uh, internet and for children having access to computers is very important. So part of our community center will host, uh, computer labs for not only the children, but the adults in our community. We are about community. We do not build projects. We believe that our community is only as strong as the people that live in there, and we work very hard with our communities to strengthen our families and making sure that they have access to those needs, um, that they may encounter raising their children or trying to get a job. Um, we're very no, much noted for our job club, helping families to make sure that they are employed and can stay employed, whether it's helping, uh, to do resumes or helping them to do a mock interview as part of our job club. So in our communities, we definitely work on that unity of the family. Uh, one of the things that we do when we go into our communities is to make sure that the residents of the area that we're working in, for example, here in Livingston, that the first people that will definitely move into our units are those that are living in Livingston. Right now, there's such a shortage of housing throughout California. Uh, that's the reason that the state has a housing element, is to make sure that everybody's meeting, uh, their fair share. So we didn't wake up and say, hey, we're going to be here in Livingston. Um, we're just right down the street in Series. We've completed, we're in Fresno. Um, we've got three projects going in Merced right now. It's about housing our people in California. There is such a lack of housing, whether it's on the affordable end to the market end. We are lacking, and we're very, very behind. And, um, this, uh, community definitely will meet the needs of your housing element. Uh, we work very closely with staff, um, in developing, uh, this layout. Uh, many conversations with Randy, um, uh, to make sure that it really comes across. If we need a crosswalk, trust me, we're going to put it in there to, uh, make sure that safety of our children is number one. Um, we definitely put streets in. We put, uh, I'm putting in a 72-inch storm drain in downtown Stockton right now, so, uh, definitely in the affordable arena, if we have to. Um, our, our statute that we work with through tax credits may, is to make sure that community is holistic, that it needing the needs of, uh, the community. And so what we need to do to get through that, uh, definitely, we pretty much worked on it. We missed the crosswalk, but we will be looking at that, uh, crosswalk. And I just wanted to, uh, explain one other thing. We are in it for 55 years. I know Randy said, uh, 20 years, but we are committed to the project for 55 years. And, um, since I'm one of the founders of the organization, I know the first 30 years goes by very, very quickly. You don't think it's going to come up, um, but, uh, definitely, our organization is, uh, there to, uh, maintain our properties for the next, uh, 55 years. Uh, so we have a great big commitment for your community from our organization. We do do our own management, because, as you know, that saying, if it doesn't belong to you, many times you don't take care of it. And we've already experienced that with third-party, uh, management. So we took over our management many years ago and said, hey, we're going to do it ourselves. If we're going to answer to the community, I want to be able to be up here and say, yes, that's my mistake, or I'm going to fix it, I'm going to do it, based on my word. So, um, we are, uh, self-managing all of our properties. And, um, we believe that, um, we are good at what we do. Um, you know, many, many years ago, just a little short story, when I first started doing this, over 35 years ago, I remember taking my first project to city council. And, oh my gosh, this room was packed with people that said, no, no more housing. We don't want any affordable housing. That's just the wrong thing for our community. And then I said, just, just one. You know, you just can't stop building, because we keep having babies, you know? Every day, children are born, and we need to be able to house them. And they said, oh, no, in five years, that landscaping won't be there anymore. So about five years ago, one of my oldest projects, um, in Stockton, they have something called Stockton Beautiful. And it's a group of residents that go out into a specific neighborhood every year. And they, uh, give awards for outstanding, um, hu- housing, how you've kept up the landscaping, what you've done to improve the neighborhood. Well, I got a call from Stockton Beautiful, because mainly they do single-family homes. And they said, you are the owners of Santa Fe Townhomes? And I said, yes. He goes, that is such a beautiful jewel. And I said, well, thank you. And he goes, we had to create an award, because we just couldn't walk away and say, this wasn't in that neighborhood. And the reason I say, I'm sharing that story with you, because that's one of my greatest awards and one of my greatest accomplishments that I've received. Because the first time I went out and tried to build an affordable housing, they told me it's going to turn into a ghetto, the landscaping, there wouldn't be any landscaping. And 15 years later, they found this jewel, and they gave us an award for outstanding management. That's the pride we take, and that's the pride, one, one community at a time that we can improve. That's our mission, that's our goal as, um, a nonprofit, a housing developer. We're not here to flip it. We're here to stay in here and be part of this community. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much. I just want to mention that, you know, it was a great, um, meeting we had with you. You gave us the opportunity to come and, and talk with myself and our interim city manager, so we appreciate the time you come in and, and speaking with us as well. Uh, council, any questions?
Just for clarity, when you say community, and again, um, congratulations on, on being recognized for what you do for other communities. When you're using the word community, is that for your, uh, apartment units? Are your resources available to Livingston as a whole, or with inside, um, your, your unit over there on B Street?
So when I say community, it's about the community around us. It's about the community we establish. We will do a needs assessment. That's why we have nearly 7,000 square feet of community center. It's not a little tiny little hole in the wall. It's a nice size, because we will assess. We're not going to be there all alone and just say, oh, this is only for our tenants. Ours is to engage the community, to strengthen the community, keep it healthy, because we want our children to have a safe place to live. And why we say communities is because that's what we are. When we live in Livingston, or the people that live in Livingston, this is your community. And so all we want to do is that if we're going to be part of this community, we want to help strengthen, we want to help meet the needs of those that are surrounded by us. That's why a lot of things that we have to make sure, um, when we're looking at a site, we had to make sure it was near a clinic, we needed to make sure it was near parks, we needed to make sure it was near grocery stores, because we need to help with the basic needs of the community. Or we don't want to put a community way out where there's no services or, um, no access to groceries and things like that. We don't, we don't build that way. It definitely needs to be within the sphere of influence of that community. And so we open it up, we'll take, uh, a needs assessment to see what services are most needed in that area. So if we run an after-school program, other children will be invited. We will be meeting with the school district, letting them know that we have a program going. If it's our childcare, many times, because we bill them for 25 slots in the morning, 25 slots in the afternoon. And so it's not just about the children in our community, because they're not all going to be three to five years of age. Uh, we will reach out into the community and bring other, uh, three to five years of age into that community. And if we're hosting any type of fair, we're going to invite the community. And if we're hosting any type of fair, we're going to invite the community. If we have classes, we're going to say, okay, these classes are being offered because it is about that support.
Thank you, Maria. Any other questions, council at this time? I have just another question and I'm going to go back to mitigating impacts, just to ask you the question, like in other projects in other cities, to mitigate some of the impacts, for example, the fire department, I know that's a concern we had as a city, the capacity to, to fight fire in a, you know, three-story, two-story kind of building. You know, we have a small department with limited resources and equipment to mitigate or to, you know, be in that situation. What have other communities or have you guys ever helped out the cities in regards to mitigating those needs?
Well, first of all, there's what is called the impact piece, which we will be paying, which should address parks and recreation, it should address fire. What we do is work very closely with the fire department when designing these units. So, you know, we haven't had a full design review where we submit our plans, but we do everything to help mitigate through our development. You know, the state law now requires that this community building will be sprinkled, so, you know, that will have to pass the testing and then it has to be monitored. So depending, I don't know if, you know, we'll need to add a fire hydrant, you know, those kinds of things still will be flushed out during the construction designs.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, council at this time? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open that up for any public comments at this time. Jose, I think this gentleman.
Yes, I have a few questions. Could you stop my time when I'm waiting for the answers? Second.
Okay. I have a question. You say it's affordable, affordable housing. Can you tell me how much the rent's going to be on a, on a face, with a 30, 40, 50? What's the rent going to be for the highest one?
So we have twos and three-bedroom units.
Right.
Excuse me, can you grab a mic so that people watch?
We have twos and three-bedroom units. The rents are going to be tiered, as Randy said, 30%, 40%, 50%, and then 60%. So each one of those categories will have a rent structure to them that fits the income that they will be paying. For example, the two-bedroom under, will be, 30% will be $391.
The 50%, the three-bedroom.
Three-bedroom, it'll be 802.
802, that's at 50%, 802.
How much a month?
$802.
Okay, now, when they sign the lease, is each tenant going to have his individual parking place?
Yes. The, right now, the project is designed to have 166 spaces.
I mean, will they be charged for that?
No, no. We are very regulated by the state. These rents are posted on the state's website under TSAC, the California Tax Allocation Committee. And so those rents are based on families' income level and paying 30% of their income towards housing.
Are they going to have, allowed to have pets?
They will be able to have pets, not, you know, that we, we do have a pet policy, so there are some breeds that aren't allowed in the community.
Okay, my next question comes with the planning commission too, is this project here has three-story buildings and we have one coming up on Main Street, you know, which you guys know going out of town. Now, I don't know why didn't plan for an elevator. Because the elevator, it's, if you don't have an elevator, you're going to go with the ADA, American Disability Act, and you might get in trouble. It's because if you don't have an elevator, you have three stories. If somebody has a relative up there, a friend, and they're in a wheelchair or motorized and they want to go visit their friend up on the third story, he can't get up there. And so that's eliminating, that's limiting the American Disability Act. You're depriving them of going up to see their friend, how are you going to get them up there?
Are you asking me or Randy?
Well, the both of you, the city and the planner.
You might have more experience with managing than, than I do. So Carol, you could first.
Okay, so, under state law, we can build a three-story building without triggering the ADA as long as that all that first floor is accessible. And so all that first floor of all the buildings will be ADA accessible.
Yeah, but that's good. But I mean, I'm calling, I'm talking about a visitor, a fan. Now, I talked to Merced County Planning and Code Division and they advised me that since this is the first time we have it in Livingston, three-story buildings on C3, that the council has the right to introduce a new ordinance saying that anything over three stories, three stories or above, shall have an elevator if they please to. So this is one of the problems I'm concerned with, is after it's built, and this is a problem we have here in town that I don't know what the limitation is on the second owner, five, 10 years where they can sell it and the new owner comes in and they raise the price up. So I don't know.
As I mentioned when I corrected Randy, this needs to remain affordable for 55 years. If we were to sell a building, which we could, which we don't, they would still, that regulatory agreement follows the building. So they can't go in and change the rent or raise the rent, trying to get people out, turn it into a market rate. They cannot do that. If at some point we wanted to renovate it and we went in through the state to get the renovation dollars, another regulatory agreement would go on top of that and the first one would need to be completed and then the second one would kick in. So say we had 30 years and we went in for another 50, 55 years, now we've got over 80 years that we have to keep it affordable. You cannot change this, it's very, very strict at the state level. And that's why so many things have been changed because we've learned some lessons along the way. I've been doing this for a long, long time and we all dealt with the HUD units being turned over to the market. Because they only had regulatory agreements that said they only needed to keep them for 20 years. And so people were very wise and figured out how to get around the system and after that, because there was nothing there holding them or obligating them to keep it affordable. So after that era, the state raised their program and the federal government because the program we're going after is actually an IRS program. And so they raised that year limit to 55 years regulatory agreements. And so you cannot do anything with that property, selling it off, it has to remain affordable. So if you were to want to buy one of our, buy one of our communities, you'd have to be shown on the title report because it is a recorded document that it needs to remain affordable.
Well, a project is good. I've been talking to Randy about it and everything else, but my only question still is a concern is about the elevator. Because with an elevator, you know, even the medical, if somebody gets sick on the third floor, if you had an elevator, you can get a gurney up there and get up there and help them. Without an elevator, you know, they can get up there all right, but it'd be much easier if they had an elevator. And since Livingston is getting more three-story buildings in, I think they should look in the future. So I know this is a final vote on it, but I think, and I know you guys are tired and want to get out of here, but I think no project is better than a bad project. So it's up to you and we depend on you in the city of Livingston to protect us and do projects right. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I just have to say that right now, all the regulatory, all the ordinance say that after three stories, then you need to put an elevator in. But today, across the state, the elevator hasn't triggered that it's mandatory to put it in.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, hello. My name is Jose Flores, I've lived in this community most of my life. Want to consider myself a little bit of an expert in some of the fire service features that would go into a building like this. All these would be sprinklers, as you were mentioning. I, I think this project looks beautiful. I, I have nothing, no problems with the exception of the three-story building. So I don't know if you're aware, but our fire department locally is what we call a one-person staff station. So if you were to have an injured or ill person on the third story, that person would have to help and assist that person to the ground floor. So this is the only concern I would bring up to the council before approving something like this, is that consider that we, we still have a single staff station. Under NFPA, you would require a 2-0 staff station minimum if there was even an emergency or a fire in a three-story building. And I'd be happy to share that information with the council, just so that you can not take my word for it, but actually take, you know, an actual reference standard that says that we should be meeting this. Again, the, the elevator is not required, it definitely is not. These are, these will be sprinkled buildings. I know that this hasn't been reviewed by a fire person because I could tell you right now that some of the clearances around the driveways wouldn't adequately meet our standard for fire apparatus. And I would say if you have a three-story building, most likely you would need a fire truck, which Livingston has, you guys have seen our, the ladder truck that the city has, that one would not meet the requirements set forth to adequately fight a fire in this building. So during the last planning commission, we, they discussed a different three-story building and I was trying to explain to the planners or the review committee that we don't have adequate, or the city doesn't have adequate equipment to meet the needs of a three-story building. They brought up the, the hotel, yeah, we have a three-story building. But there is a difference between the buildings. One, if you look at our hotel, the fire department has access of the whole building, 360 degrees all the way around. So that's one. Two, it's not high-density like this. If Motel 6 burns right now, there is no other exposures, the fire would be contained to that one building. If you had a fire in one of these buildings, the spread, we would not be able to control it without a ladder truck. That would, that would, that would go uncontrolled. We just don't, with a one-person station, you're not, it's not going to be adequate. That, that is the only thing that I, as, as a citizen, I see if I had a family member who were to rent one of these facilities, that would be my concern. Again, if they're all two-story, I don't think it would be a problem if, you know, just seeing it the way it is. I think the architecture and everything is beautiful, I think the layout's nice, with a couple of exceptions, you know, you, fire features that will, of course, this is all preliminary and of course those haven't been reviewed and I'm sure that they'll come forward, which I, you know, not to get off topic, but I'm sure you guys' tax share agreement with the county would, I don't know how that affects the plan review process, but something to consider that someone's supposed, someone should be reviewing this from the fire department side. I know that's a little off-topic, but, you know, it, it should be addressed. I don't know if somebody from fires already reviewed this. Usually, because, I, I, do you know who in fire or was it the local station or?
To answer the question, we, we sent this to the fire marshal.
Was there a comment, reply?
In fact, I've talked with him about the whole issue of three-story buildings and we've had meetings with, I think, weren't you in those meetings, Vanessa?
I believe we attended one.
Yeah, and, and so we, we recognize that that's an issue and that's something that in terms of fire improvements that we're going to have to address as a, as a city in the future. We are partially addressing this by, and that's why I mentioned it, we have the Community Facility District Fee, which adds additional funds that go to the fire department for, for just these kinds of things. But the fire marshal basically said that, yeah, this is what we want, but, you know, we, we know that this is a long-term process to get that. And, you know, part of having the sprinklers and, and, and there may well be some, during construction, some adjustments on clearances and so forth, that the building is hardened to a greater extent from fire than earlier buildings. And so it's buying the city some time to be able to have the ability to have a fire department that, that has a ladder that can reach three stories and that can have personnel there rather than so many volunteers. So the fire marshal basically said, we know this is a process and let's do what we can now and continue on that process.
And it goes back to that then. So if we're going to put a three-story building, you know, how long will it take for that process to get there? So to me, would be, it'd make more sense to say, if we have the two-story buildings, if you ever come up to having the staff into building a three-story building that's in a high-density area where you can meet the need of the community, I'd say then that would be the most appropriate time. But that's just my opinion. Again, my only concern, I get, the project looks great, I, I haven't, you know, I think we need this, this is something our community is in dire need for, but my thing is safety over the need. I mean, I'm sure we're falling more on the safety side and this is the only reason I'm even commenting, is the fear that, you know, 20 years from now, we are still a 1-0 staff station with the same equipment and there's no upgrade because, you know, as, as time goes on, the fire coming only gets more expensive. I guarantee a new ladder truck for the city would cost 1.5 million on brown ballpark. I mean, fire officials are here, they could probably confirm that for me or not. So it's not something that would just happen overnight, but at the same time, you know, as soon as this is built, there's nothing to change it. So if we don't meet fire requirements, if it wasn't reviewed properly or whatever, we can't, we can't remove something that's been put in place. We can't remove a three-story building. It's staying where it's at and we live with it for, for what it is. And the only other thing I have to add to this is, since we don't meet those requirements, what it may do to our ISO rating, so what we do for, pay for insurance purposes, so they, you know, for everything we do for fire, there's an insurance calculation that goes with that. So this will not be our highest hazard in our area, including other three-story buildings that may potentially be put in our city. So when they do our insurance rating for fire service or fire protection, they'll look at that and so what will that do to that? So I would, that's the only other thing I would suggest is looking into that, seeing how it'd affect us and our insurance rating. Because we are, I, I think the department here is also, you know, incorporates the county. And I know that the county has closed a couple of fire stations already, so every time their rating goes down and we do this, our rating's going to be affected even more. So that, that is just another thing to consider, just, again, as someone that's just more concerned about the three-story life safety, having to. having to see someone have to be rescued out of a three-story building and being on the Channel 30 news, watching someone try to, try to do what they could, but not even have the adequate resources for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council, David Bates. Uh, well, Mr. Flores, I've lived here the vast majority of my life. And, uh, so I've, I've seen, uh, some substantial growth in the city over those years. Projects like this, uh, I think are great. I have a number of concerns, not just with this project, but with several others that are in the pipeline, uh, is how, how they may, uh, impact various aspects of the community, particularly the education system, uh, which, I, I can't speak for the high school, but, uh, I have a pretty fair knowledge of the elementary school district. And what it may, uh, what it may do as far as impact, uh, to their infrastructure. And I, I'd be curious to know if there's some kind of interaction going on between the city and the school district, and, including the high school district, of course, uh, with all this development that's going on in town with projects such as this. And, uh, and if so, uh, are, are they in the process of preparing for the influx of students? Because a project like this, you know, 80 units is, is going to bring quite a number of, uh, of school-aged kids to, to town. Both the elementary school age and high school as well. So, it's going to, it actually ultimately is going to end up impacting two school districts. Uh, just, I, and I understand that there are mitigation fees involved, uh, with this to help offset some of that, but it goes far beyond, you know, simple mitigation fees. With regards to, uh, what Mr. Flores was referencing, uh, I'd just like to expand a little bit on that. And with his concern, uh, particularly that of the ISO rating, for people that aren't familiar with that, they're the ones basically that set insurance rates for people. Uh, they come in, they rate, rate the fire department ba- based on a number of criteria, including their staffing, equipment, water supply, response times, training, and, and a whole variety of things. And one of the things that concerns me is that with these three-story projects going in, ISO comes in and, and determines that we are not adequately prepared, uh, as a, as a city to deal with, with situations in these three-story buildings. That concerns me because it not only, uh, affects that, that facility and that developer with, with regards their, to their safety, but it affects your insurance rates, my insurance rates, and that, that little thousand-square-foot house across town that, you know, that those old folks have been struggling to keep, keep going for the last 50 years. And all of a sudden, they're seeing an insurance increase because ISO came in and jacked up our, our rating because we have three-story apartment complexes. I, I think it's, it's pretty unfair that, that, uh, the rest of the citizens, the rest of the homeowners and renters that are paying renters insurance or whatever, that their insurance rates are getting jacked up because we just had to have three-story apartment complex. I don't know if it's, if it's keeping up with the, the whole idea of keeping up with the Joneses because Turlock's got them now and, and Merced, or if it's just because that seems like a good thing to do right now or, or because we're, we're, we're getting a little hungry for those developer fees, which unfortunately are one-shot. You know, we don't, that's, you know, it's one-time money. Yeah, we get the mitigation fees annually from it that are earmarked to specific things, um, public safety, landscape lighting and whatnot. But it doesn't do a whole lot for, for sustainability of, of, uh, funding for much of anything else. And so, um, for whatever the reason, we're, we're seriously starting to look at these three-story buildings. Uh, I, I, I think that in the interest of the rest of the city, I, I think it might be, um, might be appropriate to at least investigate a little further and, and give some consideration to some of the other, uh, some of the other, uh, aspects of this that are not covered by mitigation fees, you know, like the, uh, the ISO situation, the situation, you know, as far as the fire department, uh, having the appropriate staffing or, or equipment and so forth to, to deal with, uh, a three-story apartment complex, whether it be this or any others. I know that there are a couple others that are in the pipeline as well. So, uh, that's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, real quick, uh, obviously there's ongoing conversation with the school districts just to answer a specific question.
Yeah, to, to respond, um, the state has, um, entered the field. And in terms of school impacts, um, they have set, set a school impact fee. And that is the mitigation. And so, uh, cities can't do more than that for, for mitigation. And so, the, um, um, we've basically been preempted on that point. And that went, that was a long process of, um, at the state legislature with suits back and forth. And, and it was very complicated and it, it went several, I think five or six years going through that process. But that issue has been quote-unquote "settled" for probably, I'm, I'm want to say seven to 10 years now. That, um, if, uh, you pay the state-established, uh, impact fee, you mitigate it. And there's no question about that. That's why the, um, school districts don't really engage with me anymore. They say, just require them to, to pay the fee, and, and we do. And they get the fee and we, we get, um, before we issue a building for it, we get proof of payment from them. And, um, so that's how that is quote-unquote "dealt with" in, in, in California at this time. Now, when it comes to, um, issues of, um, we have tried to, that's why we have our community facility district, that is not one-time money. Impact fees, correct. That's one-time money. But our community facility district is annual money. And the reason we adopted that a few years ago was to have a, uh, continuing income stream for operations, paying salaries of, um, police officers and, and firemen and, and the like, and for, uh, maintenance costs of, of fire stations and so forth. And so, we have tried to work within the framework that we're allowed to, to deal with the, um, ongoing costs of new development and how they impact the cities financially. Now, on the other side of the coin is, um, the state is saying, "Cities, you have got to provide more housing. You have got to provide more housing that's more affordable. And if you don't, there will be sanctions. There will be issues." You perhaps have been reading in the media about SB 9 and so forth, which develops, um, a, a single-family home has the right to pu- to develop, um, additional units in it. And if it's within so much distance of what is termed a transportation corridor, that can be more. We're, we're talking about fourplexes and fiveplexes being available on a single-family home lot. And so, that what is going on is the discussion that there will no longer be single-family zoning in the state. It will, um, because every, um, zone can, um, have medium-density housing in it. So, that's something that's coming down from the state saying, "This is how we're going to address the housing crisis in this state, and we're, we're going to impose these things on you, the cities." And so, there's very much a push and pull that's happening, um, that yes, we want to provide for public safety. And, uh, but we want to provide housing that's more affordable and available. And those are inherently at odds with each other. And so, what we've tried to do in, in this proposal and, um, you know, and, and Carol's group has, has, has to deal with every city they go to, um, because it's a universal challenge for all the communities. You know, I've, I've worked with Carol for over 20 years. And in several of my previous cities, we were, managed to get some projects, um, closest in, in series. I was community development director there for seven years. And, and we got, you know, a nice, um, affordable housing project, and it still looks good. And, um, so, that is part of the balancing act that you, as the city council, are charged with. It's not easy, and you have to balance providing housing, especially affordable housing, with, um, risk. The risk of, um, having three-story apartments when we really don't have the fire department that can respond effectively to, uh, three-story fires. So, yeah, there, there is a trade-off and a risk involved in that. And, um, it's, it's not black and white. And, and that, that's my preaching for today. Sorry.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. No, definitely agree with the, uh, gentleman that came up. There, there are obviously concerns regarding our ability to protect such a building, um, you know, with fire and everything else. Absolutely. The elevator thing, I also, you know, uh, understand your concern, definitely. I think for, for our city, we would need, uh, ordinance requiring that. So, that's definitely something we would, uh, I know, knowing that there's a few other buildings, three-story high, that come into town, that's something that we'll definitely, um, look into and talk about and, and, and move forward with that. Because I, I also share your concern, uh, with everybody else. And then, you know, like I said, like I'm a big advocate with, when it comes to public safety, so I understand you guys' concerns. I know, like, since, um, Vanessa, our inner manager, has come in, that's something that we, we definitely had as a priority to establish, uh, you know, better protection when it comes to fire and, and police. Vanessa, I don't know, you want to touch a little bit regarding some of the things, like, uh, I know there was an item actually today.
Absolutely. Uh, one of the items that we brought forward is the, um, review of the current CFD that we have in place. It's, uh, CFD 2005 dash one, which, um, in, it, it calls for, uh, the use of these monies that it's being assessed to property owners, um, to pay for public safety, which includes police and fire. I believe that, uh, we are not fully utilizing the, um, the, 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 the CFD put in place. And therefore, we are going to, um, have a consultant take a look at the, um, take a look at the, what is set in place and how we can better utilize those. And definitely, it is something that we, um, that I would like to start addressing, some of the, um, utilization of these funds in order to fund police and fire. And, and that's what the CFD was placed for, so we, we can start tapping into those funds and using, using them.
Thank you, Vanessa. I know there's a significant amount in there that we could definitely use to address some of those public safety needs, including a second firefighter, um, and then such things. I, I know there's a definitely a big need with a, a new fire truck that, um, you know, but then the fire truck, you know, brings other cha- uh, having a fire truck brings other challenges, like where are we going to store it, this, you know, being able to man the, the actual, uh, truck, training, um, you know, so there's obviously other, other major concerns. And, I mean, I think for, for the longest time, and I've said this before, I think the fire department's been, uh, department has been kind of neglected or not looked into in the city. It's kind of been like, well, it's the county's responsibility. Oh, it's the city's responsibility. So, I think it's reached a, a boiling point where we need to address this, um, now, before these types of projects come in, you know? But you're right, Randy. The balance is, you know, the need for housing. Um, you know, I think it's a great project, great, uh, you know, vision, uh, in regards to your community that you're trying to build, and also sacrificing some of the safety in regards to fire and public safety. Council, do you guys have any other comments, questions, any other clarifications?
Would some of your building take place in, in phases? Say, for instance, the two-story, then come your three stories, or is it just going to be?
It's, um, we have eighteen months to build. Looking at one of those, I am betting it's not that it's. Uh, when we do get all the funding, and we haven't started the funding cycle because you got to get this done first. If you don't have entitlements, you can't go for any of the state funding. And right now, there's a, quite a bit of money for getting affordable housing, um, built in the state of California. Uh, in fact, this one here, we're looking at the MHP program. The applications are due September 20th, and, you know, that's why we were here tonight. Because without entitlements, without this portion, we can't go for, for funding. Uh, when you look at a, a, a community like this, we're going to raise $32 million for, uh, this community. And that's through the MHP program. That's through the tax credit program that brings in equity so that we can keep the rents affordable. This is not a Section 8 project, so everybody has to pay their, their share of rent. And the way that we are able to get the rents down is that we have to apply for tax credits. So, everything is very, very competitive. We're good at competing. You know, uh, we even had a little discussion there. Uh, one of the things that we do look for is where is there some additional funding? Maybe not attached to this, but, you know, there's been money out there for services, especially in our rural areas, you know? How, how can we raise those dollars to get that, uh, fire engine? I just had to buy a railroad car that costs $4 million. And we fundraised for, for, for that because that was part of a community that we did. So, we're not here just for today. We're here to work on these types of issues. They're not gonna, they're not, um, there are issues that we understand because we work in the valley. So, we, we, we understand all the restraints that they, that they are, that there are, but we have to start somewhere. Is this going to be a safer building? Yes, I think, because it is required to have sprinklers. So, the minute there is any sense of fire, those water sprinklers are going, uh, to trigger. And water's going to pour down into the unit that's on fire. So, you know, we can look for those dollars. They're there, you know? It's, and it, our rural communities are just so burdened. They do need to provide the housing. They don't have all the services that, you know, um, that was spoken about today. But the only way that we can advance is that we start looking for those dollars. And hopefully, uh, we could come up and, um, we don't even see this, uh, community. If we were lucky in the MHP round, we don't even see this community start to be built until probably the latter of, uh, 2022. Because just knowing the funding cycles, this first one is September, that we're trying to get, uh, $9 million. That we won't even know until the end of the year. And then we need to apply for the tax credits. And the pre- tax credits come up March and July, so we got to be prepared for one of those rounds. to be prepared for one of those rounds. And we get six months to get into construction after that. So definitely, we're not looking at saying, we're going to go build tomorrow. We hope we could work through some of these issues. But if we don't get these entitlements today, it just stays dead until next year. And we need to get the ball rolling as far as the dollars we've invested. It's not cheap to go after a CEQA, which we had to deliver to you today. And all we did was build around the regulations that are on the books right now. You know, it's hard tonight to say, okay, let's change the rules, because there's already been a lot of time and money invested in here. And we do hear the safety issue. We understand safety. I mean, if that's one thing our firemen tell us, is if there's one life, we got to save it. And we truly, truly understand that. And this is something that we deal with in our smaller communities, is that there's a lot of times, the volunteer fire, men are, men and women, and, you know, what do we do? You know, there's housing that is needed. As I heard from some of the city council people here tonight, is that there is such a shortage, and this will help. It's not going to help tomorrow. It's definitely not going to be here for a little while. So hopefully, we could work through finding that new fire truck. And does a fire truck cost 1.5 million? If a railroad car costs $4 million, I'm very sure that's the price of a fire engine today.
So thank you for bringing that up. In regards to, I know that it's very important that we address this tonight, because there is funding out there, that the application's due on the 20th, I believe. So I know that during our meeting, that was something we talked about, that, you know, we need to go after, or you guys needed to go after those funds. So knowing that safety is critical, and you've heard our concerns, so Visionary Homes committed to help us find funding for a new truck, fire truck?
That's what my staff came and told me. Carol, let's find it for them. Let's work on it. That's what we're good at. I mean, you know, just this year, we raised $100 million that we competed for, and one of those included a railroad car.
See, we only want 1.5 million.
I know, I know. And definitely, you know, we understand fire. One of the things that visionary home builders does is they do do quarterly inspections into their units to making sure that accesses aren't blocked, you know, windows that, you know, you don't have beds or anything that can block those windows in case of fire. We make sure that those filters are clean. We make sure that people are cleaning their oven, because a lot of the fires start from people just cooking sometimes, leaving, you know, the pot going, and they step out to do something, and it starts a fire, and you get some smoke damage. So we make sure that those stoves are clean, at least quarterly, to protect, you know, the health and safety of that community. And we do go into every one of those units to inspect them. And some people may say that's abusive, but it works for us. We keep our projects, we have 1,500 units, and I think to date, we've had one fire in my 30 years of doing this. So I don't say that we have the answer for fire, but I know we have the prevention, and that's seeing how people are upkeeping their units. It's, we're very strict about barbecuers. The insurance say, when you have a building like this, you can't have barbecues. And it's sad, we have to tell our families, you can't own a barbecue, because guess what? We'll start a fire as a barbecue. And right now, insurance companies are very adamant that you have to work with your tenants not to have barbecues. And we all love barbecues, but unfortunately, that's one of our mandates that we have in our communities, is that you cannot have a barbecue within 300 feet of a building. And so that makes it pretty impossible. George Foreman, we love you.
Also, the fire department, that's why it is, that's the fire department, because the fire department requires you to do annual inspections on apartments. And your case, you also have a care facility. So, we, your licensing requires the fire department to also do inspections in that.
Yes. And that's why we keep up with it. We're very adamant about doing those inspections and talking about the barbecue, because, trust me, people will want to have them. What you say they can't have, they want to have them. And if you want to live in our community, we're sorry, but you can't have the barbecue.
Thank you so much. All right, council, any additional information, questions, comments?
Just real quick, I think that this project and this conversation kind of brings up another questions. And safety is definitely, you know, very important in everything that we have to consider. And I think it's some very legitimate concerns from everyone that have expressed different concerns. And so that also touches back on issues that have, you know, not necessarily having to do with this project in particular, but how the city has been held hostage by the county in regards to those funds being held, and for us, for the city not to be able to continue building and using some of those funds that they've been holding, for us to use for safety, for fire, and anything else. So, and I just want to take the opportunity to say, you know, it's probably one of the most good-looking projects that I've seen in quite some time. And so let's hope that we can work everything out and keep safety in mind, and find ways to continue moving forward, not only for the benefit of residents in our community, but to consider always safety, so we can have safety in place. Thank you.
So I'm gathering with the conditions of approval under the, let's see, where did it go? Number five, you'll include the finding the funds for a new fire truck underneath those conditions of approval?
Well, it's definitely an initial, we're working on that. Sometimes, you might work with the city to put the application, if you have a specific, they'll say, what do you need a fire engine for? But you definitely have, like I said, you got a railroad car.
Sorry, chief back there.
Yeah, if I could talk, I really appreciate the things that you said, Jose. My name is Brian White, Bataan Chief, here in City Livingston in Mersey County for the Dull Hightime. One of the things you look at when we're talking about the expenses and the purchases and the things that come along with the fire department, if you look at what's happened in the last 25, 30, 40 years in Livingston, Livingston City is one of the busiest departments in the county outside of the city of Mersey. They're currently running about, last year was 1,900 calls for calls of service. And then going into this year, we're looking at about 2,200. As we increasing, as we increase the footprint of Livingston and continue to grow, we have to look at the fact that we've been running a 1-0 fire department for a very long time. And when you look at what really matters is the body showing up to your fire, not the piece of equipment. And if you don't have the bodies to staff it, and it's sitting in an app bay with no one to drive it, it's about as good as it is. Those purchases usually go for a 20-year cycle. So when you make a purchase for a piece of equipment, you're looking at a 20-year in-service before it goes on to your secondary fire equipment. So that's just an upfront cost. But your long-term cost that you're going to have to look at is the actual personnel. And when we look at the fire department, you're properly staffing a truck, or properly staffing a fire engine, you know, we get away with the 2-0 staffing, but that's not necessarily where you want to be. It's just like, you try to get what you can, but when you really look at where your fire department is, is that your footprint is growing. And you see some of the major industry that's come into the city of Livingston, just across the street on Highway 99, Foster Farms, that major target hazard, to think about whether the emergencies that would happen there, and having a single fire engine show up with one person on it, you're behind the power curve. So when you guys make these decisions and move forward in your process, I mean, these are the things that help build your city, and they help pay for some of the infrastructure that comes along. But the long-term goals of trying to get the staffing onto your fire engines and the responses. I've heard people call out the volunteer, talking about volunteer fire department. The paid call firefighter is something that is in place, but it is a dying breed when we look at, as a first responder, people who want to come out and serve the community for free. It's kind of gone away with the culture of society. You may have them for a little bit, you may train them, but then they go on and become a paid firefighter somewhere else. So there are some hurdles in your city. I think it's a great project. I think you're absolutely correct. The need for housing is there, but the city needs to think about, how are we going to do this on the long term? How are we going to work with our cooperators? And how are we going to provide the firefighting force to respond to just your medical emergencies alone? When you add a project like this, you're adding not only the emergency response, but also the inspections, and the things that come along with making sure that we're meeting the needs and the things that are dictated by the state. And you made a lot of very good points, Jose. And Jose has a lot of experience in doing this, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Counsel, any other questions, comments, motions? Randy, for clarification, there's three, has to be three separate motions?
Yes.
You could actually do them together. There's three separate resolutions, and then an ordinance to introduce.
I have for your consideration as an additional condition of approval, a number 12 under site plan design review. And it's to, condition 12, the developer shall work with the city to seek funding through grants and other sources to address additional firefighting resources in terms of personnel and equipment. Now, Carol has already said they're willing to work with the city to seek sources. This isn't a hard requirement, but it's a cooperative requirement, that working together to try to get it. It's kind of a feel-good condition to say that we recognize that there are unmitigated needs that the city has, that the city can't legally impose, but, you know, we're, both parties are willing to work together. So I think it's a statement of commitment and a statement of intention. I think there's value in that. So I offer that as an option to add to the site plan and design review approval as condition 12.
So if you're inclined to approve the project, the simplest way to do it would be to move the staff recommendation with Randy's additional condition. And I would also recommend you also waive full reading of the ordinance.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, first, what does the representative think of Randy's suggestion? Is there? Yes. So what do you think of Randy's suggestion?
Well, I just want to make sure that we all work together to find that resolution, because I understand what fire's saying. We can have the tool, but if we don't have the manpower to do that, I have no control over your city budget, or how the funds are spent. So I would hope that we would have conversations and talk about, you know, these additional resources. And, you know, if you do it to us, you know, make sure you do it to everybody else, because, you know, I heard about a lot of development happening here. I think that's where you get it from. As a nonprofit, you know, we're tied to the dollars. They're very strict and restricted. And so we don't always have the pockets that the developer that does the market housing does. So what's good for one is good for all. And if everybody else is building like that, I think, you know, they need to do their fair share in whatever that is. And maybe it is an ordinance that says, you know, there's a fee. I mean, we're used to fees, whatever they are. We just need to make sure they're in our performas, and that fee isn't here today. But, you know, I think if we can work, I don't have control of the budget, you know. So it would be something that we would all look at. Looking at, you know, how other communities are doing it is another way of tapping into resources. We could definitely put it out there to the California Rural Housing Coalition and some of our partners, you know, how we could get the tool, but we'd have to figure out how to put the manpower behind it. I think, you know, you guys are going through a growing spurt, and you've got some really great things on the book coming, you know, with the rail. If you're selected, you know, you're going to have my train coming through here? My train car coming through here? So, you know, we need to just look at all those opportunities. And if it's something that needs to be addressed, the safety, which is everybody's concern, I never ignore fire. They're a big presence in future developments and the growth of the community. And, you know, it depends on whether all of you are also looking at growth, because with growth comes, you know, the infrastructure needs to be built up. And hopefully, it's just not ours, you know, that we can spread it across that. And if there is going to be something, you know, right now, we need to kind of figure it out so it can go into our performa, so we know. Because our rents, like, you know, the question was asked tonight, you know, what are those rents? Those rents are pretty low. I tell people that the valley is cash poor, especially when you're developing, you're looking to borrow money, you know. We have no borrowing power to carry debt. So, you know, most of our money comes in as equity or grants, with no repayment back. So if we're going to put it in, we got to put it in now, not later on, you know, what would be our fair share. And I think that's what we, you know, should talk about, is what would be our fair share of what your need is early on. We still have time. This is our first round of funding that we're going to go after. So there's room for a lot more discussion.
Absolutely. And I think, speaking in regards to myself, but also the council, we'll be definitely fair. Developments coming in, we'll definitely have, like you said, everybody pay into what those impacts are, just being fair with everybody.
You know, I think the other thing that I just want to share with you, the reason that, you know, we're going three stories, is that the shortage of land and the expensiveness of land. You know, yes, California had that downside when 2008, and land almost went to zero. Today, it's prime. I mean, you know, it's very, very expensive. So everybody's trying to increase density. We bid on a state piece of property, and we were the lucky bidders, and it's not even an acre. And the state was looking for us to put 102 units on less than an acre. So you want to talk about fire problems? That definitely, you know, we're addressing. But that's what they're asking for, for all this, the land that they're putting out there to build housing, is to increase the density because of the shortage.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Randy, can you repeat that again? So to make sure that I understand that correctly.
The developer shall work with the city.
On the mic, please. On the mic.
Pardon?
On the mic.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The developer shall work with the city to seek funding through grants and other sources to address additional firefighting resources in terms of personnel and equipment. So we're committing to work cooperatively together to try to get some extra funds.
So, thank you, Randy. So I don't know who this other question would be for because I think it's a very legitimate question. If, you know, like I said earlier before, if we do this for one, we got to do it for all. So how would the city go about, well, requiring to work together for this additional funding for future projects? I mean, would that have to be an ordinance that has to be, come up in place? I mean, or how would anyone make sure that? No, I know, but that language is not included in there. Well, it is included, but this is only relevant to this particular location and project. It's not necessarily citywide, right?
At your next council meeting, is the other three-story apartment project much bigger than this one? That's the villages and it's a market rate project and I think it, you know, there's been a couple people that spoke and they referred to that. And so this will be fresh in your mind two weeks from today and I can put this same kind of condition. And I think it's important to do what Carol had mentioned. If it's something we're going to ask of her, we're going to ask it of all of the apartment developers. And so I plan on putting that in the recommended conditions of approval that you see in two weeks.
And so would that be only when we are presented with a three-story building or?
Any apartment project comes to you, so.
Yes, I understand that, but the.
Well, the next one is three-story, so we'll do it. And then you can think about whether you want to make it universal for one story and two-story and maybe the answer is yes.
Thank you, Randy.
And there is one story or two-story or two-story if there's the staff.
Counsel, motions? Can you repeat it? Tom, how do you?
The easiest way to do it would be to move the staff recommendation with the added condition by the planner and I'd recommend also waiving full reading of the ordinance.
I move to approve stated by staff recommendation and everything else that he said, waiving full reading of the ordinance.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Rosa Moran. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Maria Soto.
Roll call, Councilmember Soto.
Yes.
Councilmember Moran.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion approved by vote of 5-0.
Congratulations. We're going to go ahead and move on. To any other council direction on future agenda items? I don't see any, so at this time, going to go ahead and, so, go ahead.
I know the attorney, just for the record, asked about cell phones not being up here. However, there's one cellphone I have to have at all times due to the agency I work for and being on the dive team, the air support team and our tactical support team, I'm on call at any time for those, so just want to put that on the record. I may have to keep that one up here.
Sounds reasonable, thank you, sir. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 10:31. A regular session and we're going to back into our closed session. It's 10:31.